Almost said good morning, but good afternoon. This time we'll call to order the committee, the whole meeting for Tuesday, uh, Tuesday the fifteenth of May.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer. Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Click is absent. Commissioner Osterhaus?
Here.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Chairman Eiler? Here. We do have a quorum present. We'll begin review of the proposed budget. Mr. Newfeld.
Good afternoon. Scott Newfeld with the Budget Office. What you see before you is the agenda for today. It's basically comprised of two parts. We use the term leadership and support service summary really to make sure that we were noting that the Board of County Commissioners is included within the remaining departments that we typically refer to as support services or central services. So that is the first half of the presentation. Joe will be handling that. The representatives of those departments are present if necessary to answer any questions. And then followed by that, we will move into records and taxation, and those will be regular departmental presentations with those department heads. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Joe Waters to start on the leadership and support services.
Mr. Waters.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Robin has the financial slides up before you. We'll not dwell on those for long, but you do see the two components, records and taxation, which would be the second half, as Scott said, and then leadership and support, which is the first component of the presentation here. The accomplishments and challenges within this group. So this is a, one of my challenges is talking about eight different, separate and distinct departments with a variety of programs, services, responsibilities, and trying to kind of wrap them up in general, but I'll do my best, and I have plenty of supporting cast here behind me. These bullets that we've put forward here, we're starting with this, the citizen survey, and talking about the Johnson County as a place to live. Ninety-eight percent are satisfied with that, Johnson County being a good place to live. The Board of County Commissioners strategic priorities, then are a couple of other significant accomplishments and challenges continuing forward, of course. The first on that list is achieving major project milestones. We provide that information to you, but I'm just going to touch on a few of the highlights. Monticello Library, so the first few here are libraries. Monticello Library is on target for completion here shortly, here in 2018, and occupancy yet this summer. And then the Lenexa City Center Library is, has a completion date of the second quarter of 2019, well underway, as you know. The medical examiner facility is, the construction documents are being wrapped up there. It will be out for bids very soon, I believe. It's in design development, but it is also scheduled for completion in 2019, the fourth quarter, and we had some conversation about this with Lujine Marsh with Public Health last week. The new courthouse, the board receives schematic design on March 22nd on that project, and since then, the documents have been moving forward as expeditiously as possible. So it'll be out for bid here at the end of this month, that first bid package, which is moving dirt, beginning to do excavations for foundations and footings. And so we'll be bringing those actions to the board in several steps, but that first piece you will see on July the 5th, and then a groundbreaking on July the 12th. The parking lot that's associated with that to the north, I think bids are going to be received on the first piece of that work, which is leveling, prepping, so that the parking lot for use as the construction laydown for the general contractor. That bids, I think, tomorrow, so we'll see how that comes in. The other major projects you will hear more about from Parks and Recreation, of course. You'll hear more on the Tomahawk Project and others who wastewater when they are in front of you later on for their budget presentations. But suffice it to say, there is a lot going on. That's the reason why you all made this one of your top priorities and strategic priorities. And this group, not just the support services side, it's not just facilities, it's budget, it's the manager's office, it's legal, it's purchasing, there's a whole lot of parts and pieces to making something like this happen. And you know that, that's why you made it a priority. The second board strategic priority I want to call attention to here relates to data management and the mobile website. So that is something that is included, the staffing and resources to begin the implementation here are included in the upcoming budget, in the 2019 budget. We've already had conversations in the last couple of months with the board about standardization of equipment and software and that sort of thing, and the policies and procedures that have been developed with a staff work team through the Governance Council that will help to get this standardization in place, get our centralized purchasing in place for our IT systems. In addition, the mobile application is an important part of integrating our data and our systems so that our citizens can access our information in a mobile environment and our services, and do business with the county in the most modern and also progressive manner as possible. So both of those, well particularly the mobile app, but the purchasing as well, there are a couple of resources, and we'll get into that here a little bit, but a few resources of additional staffing that were needed for each of those projects, and those are, at this time, included in the budget, as I said. The new and expanding organizational partnerships. I do want to take a moment and talk to you about just a few examples of some of the good things that have been going on, and there's challenges as well, but some of the very good things that have been going on in the central services, support services area. We have, the first one I want to mention is human resources. Just a reminder that the Sheriff's Department, the library, Johnson County Developmental Supports, all three of these organizations have literally moved resources over to human resources, people, so that human resources can take on that responsibility for those elected offices and those agencies in the last year and a half. So it's been quite a lot of growth downstairs, and they're doing a bang-up job. You've heard from the sheriff how they're, they are fully staffed, and they've never been, it's been years, I don't even remember the last time the Sheriff's Department was fully staffed. So they attribute a lot of that to the good work of human resources, and we should all be very proud of them. DTI has similarly grown in a very similar manner, Human Services and Aging has moved some of their staff resources when that opportunity presented itself over to DTI so that DTI can take on that support for them. Facilities has been doing the same with libraries on project management staff, and you're going to see some, they've done several moves staff several times in the last few years and a few more in this upcoming budget. The more those projects get accelerated, the more it takes people to do it, and Facilities is getting that done for the libraries. Facilities, TFM, Treasury and Financial Management, and Human Resources have all come together to provide a tremendous amount of support in the last year or so to the airports. It's been a great partnership, and I'd like to think that Aaron is here and he could speak to it as well, but that, that team is helping to move the airport forward with some urgent problems, of course, with the storm damage, but help them get on top of some of the best practices that are available in the organization to help them move forward as well. From a, I mentioned earlier, the centralized purchasing and the policies and procedures and the standards, that's an action that this board took to ask, to direct us to accelerate that, which is fantastic, and we are well on our way to get that done this year. There's three areas, then, that are, relate to, that have some direct impact on bottom-line savings, dollar savings, and they begin to kind of cross over from this organizational partnership bullet down to the next one, which has to do with fiscal stewardship. Facilities with the contract that this board acted upon about two years ago or so with Synergistic, and we all use Synergistic as the, it's too cold in the winter and it's too hot in the summer, kind of, well, it's Synergistic, which there's, okay, there's some truth to that, but it's saving us money. Facilities, in partnership with those other entities that own and operate these buildings, Parks and Libraries in particular, are saving dollars, over $300,000 a year. After the expenses of covering the contract amounts, the needs to, for Synergistic to provide the service, they're saving $300,000 a year on top of that. So it is a success story, it's been a quiet success, and that was Facilities led, really for the entirety of the organization, supported by this board. TFM, and this is just a reminder, I think it was right at a year ago, we implemented a change with Parks and Recreation, and that Parks and Rec came under the county's umbrella for healthcare, and that process has saved at least $100,000 in the first year for Parks and Recreation, probably more on an ongoing basis as some of the rebates begin to come into play. And then final, finally, and you will hear much more about this from the three, well, three of the, the four departments that'll be talking this afternoon, or after me, but that's TFM, Appraisers, Records Tax Administration, and DTI coming together to replace the old land records systems and get it down to one. That Orion system, that it took a long time to implement this, it's the first time it's been implemented anything like this across the country. So we're leading the way there, but that process, in the end, yielded two positions that were eliminated in the organization, so two FTEs reduction, as well as finally the elimination of the old IBM equipment that was also costing about $350,000 a year to maintain. So that project implementation is a savings of about $500,000 a year. So great stewardship, as well as tremendous advances operationally for those three departments in their service to the general public. The AAA bond rating, you all are well aware of that, you're an integral part of making that happen, but these good people to my right and my left are really leaders in helping keep us on the straight now, providing that advice and counsel to assure that we can maintain that AAA bond rating that is so important when you look back up at that strategic priority number one in all those major capital projects. The public awareness of county services, and we're doing a good job here, but we've made a lot of progress, but there's a lot more to do, and we all know that. So that is both a success, as you can see by some of the survey results that you'll see a little bit later in the presentation, but there's always more to do. And challenge, now that our, the leader of that group, our Sharon Watson, is leaving us, but I just completely threw myself off by mentioning that, but here we go. But we will persevere, and we'll continue to make progress in that area. Attracting and retaining a qualified workforce in a tightening job market. You all are very aware of the amazing unemployment rate that we have here in Johnson County, and it is really even better than the metro and better than the state of Kansas and better than the country on average. However, you know, better is good for our residents, but as employers, it's not so good. So we really have to sharpen our pencils, and we know that. It has always been our intention to be an employer of choice, and I think we make a lot of good decisions towards that end. Pay is a piece of it, but providing a challenging workplace, a learning environment where we value the diversity of thoughts and new ideas and creativity, that where we are a caring workplace, which comes down to a whole lot of things about, as important but maybe as simple as leave policies that allow people to tend to their young child or an infant, or as you get a little older, maybe caring for an elderly parents that might draw you away from your work or require you to have, need more flexibility in your work time. So we are endeavoring to really grab a hold of as many of those other ideas and things that can help us continue to be an employer of choice as it gets harder and harder from a pay perspective to kind of stand out in that regard. Before I move on from that, is there any questions? All right. The next is a simple breakdown of our cost, our total budgets from 2017, 18, and 19. There's not a lot new there, just that pretty much, there are a few new FTEs, as you can see on the slide below, but other than that, it's the keeping the lights on kinds of things that you would expect from a support services group. There's the traditional, you know, pay and benefits impacts of growth and change there, but then the kind of capital investments as well that become necessary when you're taking care of buildings and technology infrastructure. The budgeted FTEs you see have gone up a little bit this year, seven positions. I was going to try to summarize that, but there's a whole lot of gives and takes. It's an interesting list of, some of these are newer, new positions, some are positions that are moving from one department to the other. Like I was saying earlier, we've had a lot of sharing of resources between departments, which is a good thing. So we have four, four positions that have moved from one department to another, we have three positions that have been cuts or defunded, we've had one that moved out of this team to another, and then we have six new FTEs as well. We'll talk about those in a moment. So proposed changes. In the manager's office, and then I would jump down to, under the bullet related to Department of Technology and Innovation, there are a total of three positions that are effectively connected to that mobile strategy I was discussing earlier. One of those is the ADA Web Coordinator that would be in the public information group within the manager's office. That is a position that is needed today for our, to assure that our web presence, the information we put out on the web, how we post and what we post is fully ADA compliant. It's constant management responsibility and something that is really needed across the organization, not just on jokogov.org. But that is, the ideal time to bring them on is as we are designing, building, and laying the foundation of how to maintain the newly developed website, and that's what the two full-time equivalent developer analyst positions down under mobile strategy and DTI will be doing, along with project management support, of course, from DTI. The other two positions up above relate to the central IT purchasing that we have discussed several times over the last month and a half, I guess. They join the manager of that operation that was hired just about two weeks ago. He just started, and as we begin to accelerate that project forward, this, you may recall that we discussed, should this continue to remain in the 2019 budget, we plan to add, ask for an early hire for those two positions so that we can, can get that work accelerated. And then lastly, there, under DTI is a security engineer, this will join the existing security team, just give us some more horsepower in that group. The final two bullets are infrastructure and fiber matters that are, it's really attending to our ongoing investment in our systems and our infrastructure. The next page is facilities-related. Again, I mentioned there, the utilities increase for $300,000. Facilities, and so I was bragging earlier about the savings that we've seen from Synergistic, and we really have, because the average rate of increase for electric, water, sewer has been 5% per year since 2015. Well, 2015 was the last year that the board approved an increase for facilities for utilities payments. So we've seen that, you know, whatever that compounds, 16, almost 17% increase in those three. Now, natural gas has gone down a little bit and ticked up just a little, but it's, it stayed very low, but it's relatively small percentage of our total cost of our utilities, about 15%. So that Synergistic contract has allowed us to hold steady for three years, maybe four. But as we look at these latest increases, again, of 5%, nearly 6%, that request has been included in the budget. And then two facilities project manager positions, these are related to the libraries, they are funded, they're existing FTEs that are moving from the library, and they're going to be paid from the library as well. So that's that, part of that partnership I was referring to before. The remaining bullets there are really ongoing investments, just like DTI, investing in our infrastructure and our systems, keeping the lights on, I think is the Scott, or the term that Scott uses occasionally, so, taking care of basic business. Human resources has a requirement to provide additional levels of background checks, that's what that, from the state, so that is an expense there. And then legal is a reduction in a contractual services area that they typically do not utilize, so they're taking advantage of that by taking those dollars out of their budget. Doesn't make the expense go away should it happen, but it typically does not occur. Unfunded requests, then, on the next slide. DTI has several here, a new project management position that was requested, that team is stretched quite far, but that position was not, not recommended for approval. And then the next is a full-time position for HIPAA Privacy/Security Officer. We do have a HIPAA Privacy Officer today, that is a portion of Chris Schneweis's responsibility, but we need more attention even to his side than he can give, and we do not have a security officer, HIPAA Security Officer role. It's important that we have that, but it just did not rise to the level of funding. The other category here is just the non-personnel-related requests, and these are things that overall would help to improve the efficiency and the reliability and the security of our IT systems, but again, not, not quite enough dollars to be able to support those this year. And my last slide, we'll get to a few of our trends and measures that we've grabbed to try to get a consistent message across to you here. Our system uptime in DTI is something we are very proud of, that 99.9%, we stay pretty darn close to that. The question would probably be, well, then, you know, if you're 99.9, what do you want to be? Well, I think, you never want, you want to strive towards being up, having that uptime, ever improving, ever increasing. Get to 100%, that's great. Till you get to 100%, you maintain it, you're probably not going to be satisfied. And there's, you're not going to throw extraordinary amounts of money in it, but that's, that's a target that we would all like to see. The next off to the side there is the percentage of residents very satisfied with the effectiveness of our communications to the public. So as said earlier, we're doing well there, 64% is quite high, particularly when you look at the average amongst large communities at 38%. Want to keep improving, but that's a very good number, and we've seen positive movement there over the last few years. We know this is an important priority for, for all of you, as you've chosen to invest in our public information efforts. The last, then, is the resident survey related to overall quality of service provided. Again, if you look at 45% of the average large communities are rating there, and at Johnson County at 86%, that's something that we think as overall as an organization, we should be very proud of. Never satisfied, want to keep improving, but...
Mr. Waters, I want to go back to slide number eight on the capital improvements under facilities, the $2 million, the 1.4, and the 510,000. What are those monies, other than the broad category, are there specific improvements that those monies will be used for?
Yes, there are. Brad is moving to the podium, might be able to answer that more quickly than me.
Brad is moving to the microphone. Hint, hint.
Or did he move to the door?
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Brad Reinhardt with Facilities. So we'll start with the CRP program. So in general, we have some HVAC work at the administration building, there's some doors that need some work in this building that don't secure with our access control system. We have some allowances for small amounts of money for some studies, when we need to look at a roof or an HVAC system to assess its condition and determine if it needs some investment. There's some pavement included in here. Flooring, that one was moved out.
Okay, so it's a number of smaller projects.
It's a general, a number of maintenance programs or maintenance improvements to, throughout our portfolio of buildings.
And the 1.4?
And that is the major asset replacement. We have a roof at Arc III and a roof at Sheriff Ops, boiler replacement at New Century Adult Detention, and some HVAC equipment rooftop units at the Sheriff's Operations Center.
Okay, all right.
And then the last one, the 510 for mental health, CRP. We have some roofing replacement and repairs at CSS. A number of small items, roofing, some plumbing, some HVAC replacements, nothing that, one large roof replacement at CSS for 194, that's the largest item on there, most of them are below 100,000, the rest are below 100,000.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Reinhardt, on the, you said HVAC repairs or replacement on this building was a part of the 2 million?
Yes, so there are some rooftop units, or an air handling unit here at this building that's at end of life and needs to be replaced, and I don't know if you recall, actually there are two, sorry, and if you recall, last year, we had one of our chillers fail, and we had the generator and portable chiller out front, rebuilt that chiller, this year we're going to rebuild the other chiller, so that should extend the life of the second one that we have.
Okay, thank you. I'm assuming these, these amounts will be revisited again when we get to the capital improvements portion of the budget?
Well, we see a list, right?
We can definitely provide you a list.
Because it wasn't in this material, was it?
No.
Okay, I didn't see it.
Okay. All right, very good. Okay, thank you. All right, continue. Next subject matter is RTA.
Mr. Chairman, questions?
Yeah, Mr. Ashcraft.
Before we get into RT, that's records and taxation, correct? Okay, yeah. Mr. Waters, I had a number of questions since you're in the spot, please feel free to deflect them accordingly. Mr. Chairman, I was looking at this, both the BLCC's budget and the county manager's budget, and since the county manager's kind of the principal agent of the commission, the two to me mix together fairly easily, and I think appropriately, but I was just wondering why we thought that the number of responses to the citizen survey was a, was a measure. I mean, we contract for statistical significance, so I wasn't quite sure what the thought process was there, and you don't have to answer that now, but I just, I just, I just wasn't tracking with it, so that's, that's why I was asking.
I think I would say it's an expectation that we want to assure consistency, but I would agree with you, it is, it's not providing a lot of information other than an assurance that we receive the same number... that we receive the same numbers consistently from a consistency in our survey technique.
The goal is to provide a statistically valid sample every year, not necessarily, okay, okay. If that's what you're trying to say, I wasn't quite tracking with you, so that's fine. Could I ask questions about the budget and financial planning department at this point? I mean, this is what we're covering, correct?
Yeah.
And Mr. Newfeld, I'll direct this to you. I was looking at, let's see, it's page K6, I believe, of the Support Services, and I was looking at your measures, and you're talking about new measures or no survey made. And I went back several years, and that's what you say every year. I'm just wondering, when will there actually be measures and when will it no longer be a new measure? I mean, I've gone back at least to 2015, and I stopped. I mean, what are we trying to say here?
Basically, what's happened there is a couple of things. One is that we did take a look at making some changes to those in the past year. The other part is, quite frankly, we haven't done a very good job of following up after the budget in the summer and early fall in doing that. So I don't really have any, we have changed a couple, but generally speaking, in years past, we were a little better about surveying the Board and the organization. And the last few years, we've got caught up in other things and haven't done it. So that's really not a great answer, but that's the truth.
Because the ones listed have been listed year after year. I didn't know.
Yeah, I think we did change a couple.
We did. We had a survey for a couple of years, and we didn't get a lot of responses. And so we can, so we stopped doing that for a little bit, but we'll continue to try and survey the Board and some others to get those responses.
Okay. Well, and this is a question related to budget, but I'm going to direct it to Mr. Waters because he and I have had this conversation. One thing I don't see in budget and finance, financial plannings, performance measures, and I haven't seen in the other Support Services groups, are attempts to get feedback from internal customer and internal customer satisfaction. Some of these measures are, I'm sorry, pretty soft, and customer satisfaction and how well you're responding, and I mean, I would extend it to even beyond you to include like the legal department and others. There's just very, very little there, and there's very little in terms of timeliness of response for these Support Services, IT purchase. I mean, they're all very important services for the overall direct service delivery of the other departments. And I just, I don't see too much of that. Is there a reason why we have not more fully considered our internal customers?
Can I answer on?
Yes, Joe.
Well, I just, I asked him if I could, I asked him if I could answer.
No, you're fine.
One thing that we actually do that's probably not portrayed here that maybe we should do a better job is, I know in our office, and I know we've received from other internal support or other departments, is we do send out requests to all of the departments of our analysts, asking them for feedback on their performance through the year and on budget. And we actually use that during our performance reviews. So we do do that, but we don't have that information in here, but it might be good to do a general one. And I know that we've received requests for that for others as far as their performance, so that's inlaid in their performance reviews and for their merit, and so, but we probably don't do a good job of relaying that outwardly.
Well, and I'm not asking for individual feedback, but some kind of composite would be helpful, I would think, from a management perspective.
Yeah, and if you look at the number two, where it says no survey made, and then new measure 19, I think that's getting to the heart of your comments, which is a Support Services survey, which obviously would be broader than budget.
Right.
So that's something that we did years and years ago, probably it's been 10, maybe? Eight or 10?
It predates me.
And so that, that one is, the intent is to revive that in some form or fashion in 2019 and have measures there. So that was, in some regards, I don't know how well all that'll turn out in terms of the data it will yield, but my recollection is, is that some of those comments that you made were similar types of things that we asked in years past.
Because we go through this exercise of asking the departments to provide cogent measures, and I'm not seeing much, much attention to detail or much substance there. And I'm sorry for the criticism, but I wanted to ask, and I'll ask you, Mr. Waters, but if you want to deflect to Mr. Reinhardt. I was looking at the facilities measures comparing previous estimates for 2017 to actual, and the original estimate for 2017, for example, on number of completed on-demand work requests was almost 26,000, but the actual for 2017, this is on page K20, was less than 15,000. So that's substantially less than what was originally projected. And I went through those measures comparing them to what was originally estimated to the actual, and they're substantially less, but there's no explanation, no impact. And you've got staffing requests, and I'm just trying to get a sense, you know, is that going to help these, or are these not going to be impacted by these staffing requests? How do I make the connection, the linkage, or is it not relevant?
The, I think when it comes to the staffing requests, the staffing requests for facilities are related to projects that are being managed for the libraries.
And I think you're right.
So those would not be related to work orders through the maintenance side of their operation, not directly anyway.
Okay.
The, I'm not finding that number.
That was from a previous budget.
Oh.
Had the estimates, so yeah. And I know you haven't talked about human resources, but kind of a similar situation where what was originally projected for 2017, when I compare it to the actual, there's a little bit of difference and no explanation in terms of impact, in terms of what you're doing with staffing or performance. And it means it's just a budget request seems to be divorced from your performance expectations. And I struggle with that, so for what it's worth.
Okay, all right, all right.
Okay, the broad, overall section's RTA, but we're starting with motor vehicle, so I apologize. I was waving at John to come up, and I needed to be waving at Tom, so.
You're going to cover that?
Yeah. So I apologize for that. We'll all get settled up here. We have Tom Franzen and Amy Meekerberg to start with motor vehicle, and I'll turn it over to Kerry Holwick from my office now.
Okay, first off, we'll start with the first couple of slides, which Tom is going to provide some further remarks. So we'll start with Tom, and then he'll turn it over to me to go over the budget.
Good afternoon. Tom Franzen with Treasury and Financial Management, and we're here to talk about motor vehicle this afternoon. And real quick, the, I'm not going to read through the mission statement. You have it there in front of you for motor vehicle, so I will just move on if that's okay with everyone. A couple of key points we want to talk about through this budget cycle with regard to motor vehicle are listed in front of you there, and I'd like to take a minute to talk through them real quickly. First is continued migration of renewal customers to our self-service options. There's a graph coming up that you'll take a look at that shows the transaction volumes at the bottom of the screen here. And if you take a look at how we've been performing in motor vehicle since 2014, we've been trying to shrink that, what is orange in color there, that's the in-person service that we provide. And let me restate that. We've been trying to get our customers to utilize the most cost-efficient delivery of service, and that is through the mail or going online through web tags. And you can see the trend over the last couple of years, how we've been increasing that through communication efforts, through working with the community to try and understand what's the best way to receive service. And then you'll notice also, as we get towards the 2007 year, we instituted the kiosk option in March of that year. And that gets to the point we want to talk about, which is trying to migrate customers to those self-service options, which are mail, online, and in fact, kiosks in the offices. And knowing that, you'll see in 2017, we had roughly 4% that were using the kiosks. What you don't have in front of you there is the data we have for 2018, year-to-date, which is that number is increasing and is up to 5% at this point. So we're making some slight shifts in there. That is part of our strategy, and it appears to be working. The goal, as I said, is to continue to reduce that orange color to make sure that customers that are being served in the offices, there are more costly transactions. We're trying to minimize that to the extent possible. And some data just to back it up, for 2017, we had 82% of the customers using the self-service renewal options, and in 2019, year-to-date, we're up to 86%. Specifically about the kiosks, if you look at year-over-year, in April of 17, we did 295 renewals through the kiosks, and in 2018, for all of April, we did 475. So that's a 61% increase. And there's a couple of reasons why we're seeing that increase, and I'm going to talk about those here in the next section. But before I did that, just wanted to make sure if there were any questions, I could address them at this point regarding the data.
Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since Mr. Franzen's up here, I was wanting to ask about abandoned calls, because kind of skipping back on TFM's measures, I was noticing the number of abandoned calls had doubled from your original estimate. And I was just wondering how you were doing with your original estimates on calls answered or calls abandoned as originally projected, because I know we did add quite a few staff. Hopefully, you're keeping up with that.
The abandoned call rate is a challenge for us, and just to kind of reset, we have a number of people that call our motor vehicle service line, and we have three staff that are dedicated to answering those calls, excuse me, the four staff that are dedicated to answering those calls. We do a good job of turning those calls around, but at peak times, we'll get a number of calls that we can't answer. We do have web resources that we provide, and obviously, there are other phone lines, I believe, customers will call into, enabling the Treasurer's Office to try and get service. So it's hard to really look at that data and understand exactly what we can do to improve upon that, short of adding staff. We're obviously trying to load level the staff utilization as much to the extent we're providing frontline customer service. But to that extent, we are continuing to address the phone pod, and we're looking at some innovative ways to address that as we go forward.
Okay. Because at one point, Mr. Franzen, we had talked about, and you had presented some strategies to try to encourage people to move to the web and more automated interactions to cut down on the staff-intensive type of responses. So are you tracking that, and is it being successful, or is it about the same? Or you said abandoned calls, but how about generally? What's your sense of what we're doing and what we should be doing?
Well, let me address it this way, and I was going to talk about it in my next point, which deals with...
I'm sorry, well, go ahead with that.
If you don't mind.
No, go ahead.
And circle back to your points there. The next part I was going to talk about was the positive community survey results. And as you know, from the recent survey, the motor vehicle register, motor vehicle system was ranked at 68% of very satisfied or satisfied on our survey. And there's a couple of reasons for that, we believe. And if you look at that survey specifically, if you recall, there was a graphic there that had quadrants, and it showed a quadrant where motor vehicle was placed, and that was called the Continued Emphasis Quadrant. And that was basically a function of, it was a higher importance service that we provide, and it had a higher satisfaction. So the resources we're putting to the motor vehicle operation are being well-received by the community, and we're very proud of that. One of the things we've done in 2018, along with the kiosks, is we rolled out our ambassador program with the motor vehicle. And this is where we have anywhere from one to two people that are actually working the floor. As people walk in, they're being greeted immediately, they're being asked what service they're here for. So for those people that are here for driver's license that we don't provide, they're quickly given information on how to go ahead and go to the location to get their driver's license issues addressed. We're looking at paperwork as they come in to make sure they have the right paperwork there for the transactions. We're basically meeting them immediately and meeting their customer service needs. And we feel that is one of the drivers behind the customer service response that we received on the survey. It's very important, we're seeing a lot of positive feedback from the customers as they interact with our ambassadors. We're finding that the transactions are more efficient when people get to the windows. There's a lot of positives with that. In addition to that, I would like to remind the Commissioners, when we're talking about the survey results and the importance of the motor vehicle operation, while we can control many of the different aspects of that, there are a few aspects we don't control. And as you're all well aware of, this is a partnership we have with the State of Kansas Department of Revenue. They operate the system, they set the rules, they help us enforce the laws on the State of Kansas. But I will remind the Board, there are challenges that come with that relationship, one of which, and a good example was late last month, there was a system outage in Topeka. It was the last Friday of the month in our office, about 2:00. We were down for a little bit. We, the transactions were in the middle of processing, we couldn't finalize. So while there's a little bit of disruption there, that's something that we really can't address. We'll do the best we can from a customer service, but that's an example of something beyond our control. So while we try and do as best a job we can, there are certain things that we are relying upon the state for, and just wanted to remind the Board of that. The third item on that key points slide was implementation of change in office hours in 2018. And really, for this year, we're monitoring the shifts in the transaction process, so we're early on. But if you recall, we talked to you last year about, beginning of 2018, we're going to change the office hours. They originally were 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. We dialed that back to 7:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And that was really from feedback we'd received from our employee base when it came to regards with the work-life balance and some of the challenges we'd had, because while it sounds like 4:30 is a normal closing time, we were finding that on busy days, staff weren't going to get out of there till 6:00 or later sometimes. So that obviously was disruptive. Our hope by changing the hours was to go ahead and get the customers still served, but allow our employees to have that balance. And what we're seeing early in 2018 is we are hitting that stride. It makes sense, we're still getting the customer served, and we're able to get the employees out of there in a time fashion that makes sense. In addition to that, there's a fiscal note associated with that. We're having less overtime in 2018. We've already saved $13,000 through the first four months of the year, so obviously, that's a plus. And that was one of our hopes, that we would be able to dial that back as well. All right, on that key points slide, there's some items at the bottom that we listed as challenges. And I talked a little bit about the state and our relationship with the Department of Revenue. I also advised you, in, I think it was March, we sent a letter to the Board that basically said there was an implementation of a system that the state was rolling out that the Treasurers across the state were not aware of, and that was the ICANN application. And for, if you don't recall, that is the state's transition to a new vendor for their web tag solution, that's the online credit card payment process. They migrated away from that to a mobile solution. So they went ahead and implemented that. There were some issues that weren't fully finalized before they went live, but they went live with it. We've been working with them since then to go ahead and smooth those over. Most of what we're seeing are really more back-office functions that are not real efficient, that may have not been a priority for the Department of Revenue when they rolled it out, but we're working with them to make sure it works. And just a couple of examples. One, the reporting we get doesn't give us the data that we need, so we have to manipulate data so we can do our balancing. Another one was how ACH payments are collected. The prior vendor was doing a very good job of that, of representing items that may not have cleared the first time. This vendor hasn't been doing that, and so we've had a little bit higher fail rate when it comes to collections. We're working with the Department of Revenue and that vendor to go ahead and improve that process, but those are some of the challenges that come with a relationship like we have with the state. The second item on there is the digital plate productions, and I'm going to actually let Amy talk about that real quick.
Yes, the state is planning in August 1st to roll out a new process for plates. And they're moving from our embossed plates to a digitally printed plate, so it's going to be a flat plastic plate. This is scheduled for August 1st. This is scheduled for August 1st. So, in that, you know, we're looking for a smooth implementation by the State of Kansas. There is one thing we've identified that we have concerns about. The state is moving forward with separating the decals from the plates. So, for example, decals will be provided to the customer at the time that we process their transaction, but the plate will be mailed to the customer from a centralized location. We have a lot of concerns about customers misplacing those decals and not being able to marry those up with their plate at the time when they're ready to put on the vehicle. So, we've been working with the State of Kansas on that process, and continue to hope, and are looking for support in making that more efficient and effective for the customer, where it all arrives at the same time for them, for their convenience. We may see a small savings at the county level with not having to transport plates from office locations, but it's going to be very minimal, and we're estimating that to be roughly $5,000. So, just to give you a sense. But we also think there will be an impact to our staff as we start to communicate this to the customers. If there's confusion, we're definitely going to work on ramping up towards, you know, mid-June, 1st of July, information, communications, working with PIO to get this out to the public so they start to understand the new process.
Just to clarify, in other words, we're going to issue the decal, but the state will send us through the mail the tag on which we are supposed to place the decal?
Correct.
Good luck. I'm sorry.
We're putting them on the existing plates.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Wow, wow. And, okay. Okay. You know, it reminds me of something I read in the newspaper the other day, and maybe you've thought about it, maybe it doesn't impact your operation, but the director of Revenue was talking about privatizing a certain portion of their activities, and because they didn't have enough people or something. Is any part of that new system, whatever they're talking about, will it be impacting your operation? Do you know?
So, Mr. Chairman, that's a great question. In fact, when I was listening to that interview, that was my first thought. And I actually have a meeting with the Secretary of Revenue later this week to talk about potential impacts from that decision to address it. And what the chairman's referring to for everyone, the state has outsourced, or is in the process of outsourcing, the service for their income tax collection system. And there were a number of IT staff dedicated to that service. My understanding is K-DOR has dedicated resources for the projects they're working on for the motor vehicle operation, but I can't say for certain that some of those resources also weren't being leveraged on the other side of their IT department. My questions to the secretary will be, what impacts, if any, do you see on the projects currently underway and the projects that are still to come in the Department of Revenue from a technology support standpoint?
You know, if you had that conversation, I would emphasize this idea of the state sending out the tags. That, I don't mean to be overdramatic, but that's a little scary. You know, people are going to put the decals on existing tags, probably. And what confusion that creates, is it a money-saving effort, somehow more efficiency to send them out from one location? I mean, if you're in a small county with 15 or 2,000 residents versus Johnson or Sedgwick County with, you know, over 550,000 residents, you know, two different climates. I hope you'll express that concern.
We have expressed that more than once, and to be clear, we are trying to get the Department of Revenue to appreciate what the largest county's needs are in this issue, because quite frankly, the entire process is about efficiencies. That's why we're going away from the embossed plates to the digital plates. It's about efficiency and saving money. Some of the decisions being made along the way, theoretically, or I guess conceptually, have been made well-intentioned, but probably are going to have some adverse impacts on Johnson County. One of the things we've mentioned to the project team working on this is, we have roughly 16,000 registration reprints currently, where somebody has lost a decal, or it was stolen, or there's some other issue, it didn't get to their mailbox. The fact is, in a large county like ours, these are operational concerns that probably were not given the right amount of consideration when they're doing this project design. So, we've been making this case that this is very important. We believe those decals should be affixed at the point of production and then mailed. There are some law enforcement concerns with that. We're working with the law enforcement community to try and address those concerns. The Department of Revenue has made some soft commitments to trying to address this, but it's going to be after-go-live. So, we're continuing the conversations, trying to make sure that we can get to that solution as quickly as possible.
Well, I just go back to the, several years ago, and we had the new computer system put in. And the clerks had to go from, I don't remember the exact number, from five screens to 15 screens of information. And that was supposed to increase efficiencies and yada, yada, yada. And somebody forgot that 15 is more than five, and would take longer. So, anyway.
No, and I appreciate the board's sensitivity to that. We're doing our best to keep that in front of the Department of Revenue.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a kind of a comment, I guess, more than anything. It's hard to fathom that the cost of the postage to mail that to every Kansan's front door could be less than the cost of distributing them to the counties. And at this point, I think I have more faith in, well, maybe if we outsourced it to Amazon Fulfillment Center in Edgerton and had it distributed, it shows up to my house before I can get back that way. Thank you.
Mr. Ostras.
Well, maybe this is something we need to address with staff, that we can, a letter of some sort, that maybe the chairman can sign on our behalf, that we can send up the chain to our legislators. Because this reeks of what you were saying, Chairman. This just sounds like we're going to end up with something similar to that nightmare that we had. And I personally don't want to go through that again. I know Tom doesn't want another, you know, series of three weeks of 12-hour days. So, yeah, I'd like to cut this off before it gets too far ahead, if we can do that. So, I don't know if there's, if it'll do any good, but if we can lend our support to it, I think that's important.
And I appreciate that. If I can suggest to the chairman, if you let me have the conversations with the Secretary of Revenue to really understand their commitment level to meeting Johnson County's needs, I can give you the feedback after that. And if we need to engage the board, would love to do it at that time. But I want to give them every opportunity to do the right thing, and quite frankly, address the concerns of the largest county in the state.
Okay. All right. Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good point.
Mr. Fransen, to go back and revisit the call issue, I apologize, I found my numbers. I was noticing that you had originally estimated the number of service calls for '17 and '18 to be about 70,000 each year, or about 80,000 each year, but it's actually 70,000, so it's down. So, I guess that's a good thing. But then I was looking at the number of abandoned calls, and your original estimates that I had for '17 was about 12,000, and for '18, about 12,000. But the actual for '17 is 40, almost 49,000, and you're now estimating 47,000. So, big shift there in those abandoned calls. So, I hope there's something that you're attempting to do with an existing budget to address that, because I don't see that in any budget requests here. So, I just make that as an observation.
That's correct. And I'm glad you came back to that, because as I started to mention, I don't have a comfort level with those numbers, quite frankly, on what that abandoned call truly is of the 48,000. That could be you calling and hanging up and calling back and hanging up, and I don't know. I know we are focused on addressing both from our web presence and redoing the county's overall website, trying to really drive the customers that have information requests to that resource as quickly and as efficiently as possible. And I know that's a focus for the board and for the county management team. So, we're happy to work and make sure that we can continue to improve our communication channels.
And that's a fair strategy, the website. Hopefully, there will be some relief there. But I'm just going by the numbers that have been consistently presented by your department over the last five years. And however you're defining them, I'm hoping they're consistently defined over that time.
Let me ask you one question. Your voicemail, when someone calls into DMV office, have you identified that it's the DMV office and not the Driver's License Bureau? Thank you.
Yes, we made that change.
Thank you.
At the chairman's astute request, after I believe he called in once.
Personal experience.
Exactly. Before Carrie gets to the very exciting budget measures here, I had two more points to make before we leave the key points slide. And quite frankly, they're on the slide, but it's some good news. The first is, Amy and I are working very closely with the Department of Revenue and select legislators as a part of our process to improve the overall motor vehicle function. And namely, you know, I've come before you talking about some of the revenue challenges associated with the motor vehicle operation, and how we lose money in aggregate across the function that we provide service to. Our strategy has been to educate legislators, get them to understand what our challenges are, and really kind of redefine the entire revenue model around motor vehicle. There are a number of fees that are being charged, they don't necessarily meet the cost of the services, there are rising costs across the state, and there's general concern. The Kansas County Treasurer Association is engaging with the legislature and the Department of Revenue to try and address that. Johnson County is taking a lead role in that. We are hopeful that by engaging select legislators on the transportation committees, we'll be able to move this forward in the next legislative session, and hopefully do something to enhance the revenue streams, so we can go ahead and really continue to invest in the motor vehicle operation. And the last item I did want to mention, and this is something that I haven't really even had a chance to talk with county management about, we were notified late last week that we are a recipient of a NACO award, and it's the Achievement Award in the category of information technology, and it's for our recently introduced kiosk program from last year. So, we're excited about that. We will be traveling to Tennessee in July at the NACO conference to go ahead and accept that award, and obviously, get that in front of the board here as soon as we get that, and talk a little more about that program and some of the impacts it's having.
Okay. All right. Continue, please.
Total published budget for 2019, excluding cost allocation and risk management, is 5.4 million. Budgeted FTEs for 2019 are 69.1. Trends and measures has already been covered by Tom. And please let us know if you have any additional questions.
Questions? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we have until August, is that right?
August 1st.
August 1st. Okay. Got your work cut out for you.
What are we doing? Appraiser?
Okay, yeah, we're on the appraiser now, and we have Paul Welcome joining us, and I'll turn it back over to Carrie.
Okay. And I will turn it over to Paul to go over the first couple of slides and cover any further remarks.
Hold up, Carrie, appraisers? Oh, there we go. Our main job is to be sure that we have equalization among classes of property to maintain higher standards of practices. And we do that through our revaluation on an annual basis. And we have been able to continue to do that annually. Key points that we have is our litigation, dark store, hypothetical lease fee, market value, that is going to continue to be one of our key elements that we are going to have to deal with in the upcoming year or two. We've continued to maintain our statistical and procedural compliance, meaning have we done everything according to statutes? Yes. And as well as we have, are at the correct appraisal level and uniformity level that is required by the state. We feel that the upcoming issues are going to be massive, new subdivisions that are going to be going in, development cycles, as well as a lot of new construction that will be happening in the coming year. We're seeing a lot of that in this particular year, and I think it will be continuing because of the market conditions that we have. Again, we still have anything under $400,000 is highly desirable, and will be, will continue to see pressure, because we're out of balance between supply and demand in that particular area. Next line.
Yes. There's no questions. I will go on to the total published budget for 2019, excluding cost allocation and risk management, is 7.8 million dollars. Budgeted FTEs for 2019 are 87.4. Trends and measures display appeals are on the uptick. The appraisers office has worked very hard without new FTEs, and customer service is exceptional. Please let us know if you have any additional questions.
Paul, let me ask you this, just for public information. How many property appraisals do you have to do on an annual basis?
About 220,000 real and about 38,000 personal property.
So, the first number would include commercial properties also?
Right.
That'd be the number of parcels.
Yeah. Number of parcels, that's, those are number of parcels, therefore, we have to set a value on every parcel, exempt as well as taxable.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Chairman. A couple of questions I just wanted to run through real quick, Paul. On parcels, you said 230,000 in Johnson County. How many parcels does Sedgwick County have? Do you know?
No, but I know that they have a lot of mobile homes, and so the parcel count would be quite high with a mobile home count, but I can get that for you.
I'd like, I'd like, yeah, if you would, please. I'd like that. And additionally, with Sedgwick County, I'd like to know the number of appeals total and the percentage of overturns, and then total number-
What do you mean by overturns?
When they appeal, that the-
At the total level, or the property owner comes in and appeals, how many are adjusted?
I guess at any level. If it's overturned at any level.
At each level.
At each level. Yes, that's a better way to say it. Yeah. At each level. And then the total number of employees, both here and, I think I saw it on the FTEs.
Yeah, we have 84.
And then how many total employees Sedgwick County has. I'm trying to get a comparison between what we're doing and what our comparable county is doing in Kansas. Thank you.
Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Welcome, there's a note down here under your measures that, with a little asterisk, says, "Note an increase in the number of parcels." You know what I'm talking about? And you indicated increased stress level, turnover, sick level, usage. Can you tell us a little bit more? Are you experiencing higher-than-anticipated turnover agencies?
Our turnover has not been, has been extremely low for the last year, year and a half. But with the pressures of the market out there that may see an uptick in that particular arena. Let me see where else you go.
I'm guessing you put that in there. I don't, somebody put it in. You see it in the small print there.
We have tried to use as much technology as possible to keep the, increasing our parcel count, but actually using what I consider modern technology, oblique photography, front elevation photography, those type of things. And now we're in, getting ready to use into the field, we'll be taking a field device, which is a computer, and being able to do the data entry and collections right there on the site.
And that makes sense. I was just comparing it to the second number, A, about parcels per appraisers, and there are two that are ticking up and two that are ticking down. The estimated change for total doesn't look that great, but I was just wondering what the impact was, so.
Right. The impact on the one that's going down is really the personal property side on commercial personal property business. We're seeing a decrease in those accounts because they're no longer taxable.
Well, the one thing you don't have here, and in some ways, you may be selling yourself short, is, has to do with customer satisfaction, because I know nobody wants to be appraised. But I have heard repeatedly that your appraisal staff have been, have actually been very, very supportive of people in the process.
93% is the scoring that, between good and excellent, that we receive this in 2017. That's on the slideshow in the right lower corner. We pride ourselves, we, anyone that comes in on the residential side, we survey them. After the hearing is complete, they can go out and then fill out a form. Now, we get about 60% of our appeals are now by phone, and so we're really, we have about 40% of the total appeals are now in person, which is a convenience that we provide to the public, and we're able to conduct the hearing and be able to come to a decision on that. All of our decisions will be mailed out this Friday, and the website will be updated.
But just as a frame of reference, I'm glad it's on the slide, but it's not in your budget presentation, and I couldn't find it, that's why I was, is it here?
It is not, but we will see that that will be added.
I mean, you're selling-
We're very proud of that number.
Right. I think you're selling yourself short. Right, you're, I think you're selling yourself short. I mean, not, not that you're not doing well, but you're not, you're not capturing, I think, what should be a key indicator.
Absolutely, and we will see that that's included.
Thank you.
Mr. Allen?
I was actually going to comment on that, and my take on that, when the number is going up, is actually in the last couple of years where overall in the county appraised values have went up, so people naturally have a disagreement, they're thinking their value's less, but after they go through that, to me it's kind of amazing that 93% say it's fair that, I would personally think there'd be a stronger number that, to just say no, because they have to go through it, so.
Okay, we capture that survey as soon as they're done with the informal hearing, and they don't know the results yet, but that's when we capture. We want to know if they were treated professionally, courteously, and also in an efficient manner, and that is three things that we really focus on, and we're very proud. Our staff actually reviews all the comments, we put them into Survey Monkey or something like that, and then we actually go through all the comments that are given to us, and so that we can better ourselves for the next year.
And I commend you for that, Mr. Welcome. Other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have the Department of Records and Taxation, so now John can actually come up after I tried to call him up early. All right, and Gail Kaufman is the analyst for RTA. Go ahead, John.
And go ahead and turn it over to John to start us off.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Bartelak, Director of Records and Tax Administration. As you can see from our mission statement, we strive for quality service and efficient operations in a trusted and secure environment. And I just have a few comments for you. The way we're able to do that is because I do have the best staff in Johnson County government. They do a great job every day, and I'm very proud of them, and, and I want you to know that they're the best in any county government. Our biggest, we have several success items to discuss. The first is, I think Joe mentioned it earlier, the implementation of the Orion Tax Rule application. This was a multi-year project with multiple departments that were involved in it. We went live with it last November with great success, and I look forward to continuing to grow it in the next several years. We already have several other Kansas counties asking when they can come and view it to potentially use it in their own county, so I think that's truly a sign of success for us. On our performance measures, we have, we have some listed. We have put a lot of effort into our performance measures this year and have set up several new measures to, to collect, several internal and external surveys. We just started those, so we have no, no data yet, but we are moving that, that way. So next year, we anticipate having much more information regarding those. We're really making a strong effort to, to improve on those. We continue to be excellent stewards of the taxpayers' money, and we're able to do that because we, we do practice the use of bringing in new technology, we cross-train staff, and we constantly review our procedures. Since 2000, Johnson County has increased in population by over 125,000 people, and we've increased that parcel count during that time by 42,000 parcels, and that will continue. And we expect to be able to continue to process those with the same number of employees that we have. I just might note that during that time, our staff has been reduced by 14 FTEs, and we're still keeping up with that volume of work successfully and with a less than 2% error rate.
There's no initial questions. I'll go to the budget. In 2019, the budget for RTA is 2.98, almost 3 million. The FTEs remain flat at 38. And then there, the proposed changes, rather than RTA asking for money, we actually reduced their budget with the agreement of John and going through their, their operating budget by $100,000. We will be looking at giving some one-time funding for a potential startup of an archivist internship program that would eliminate the archive filing and storing backlog. I didn't know if John wanted to talk anymore about that, or?
We're, we're doing a couple of things with archives. The first is we're trying to reorganize and make sure that the records that we are storing there are in the proper order, the proper place, and definitely in line with the retention schedules as established by the Kansas State Historical Society. Then our second phase of that is to move to electronic storage of these records as opposed to the paper storage, so that, that would be the work that these interns would be working on.
And then on to the trends and measures. The number of documents recorded in 2017 was 116,000, and those, the drivers of those documents, and then the next slide for the parcels, are a lot to do with the lower lending rate and then the economy will drive the number of changes in recordings up. The calls answered are, for 2017, is getting up to close to 119,000, and that, they're related to higher volume of recordings and parcel changes that drives all the calls too, as well as increased valuations, because that is the county's call center. So, and I think they've made a lot more public that that is the number two call, so that of course what increases their calls probably decreases calls directly to departments. With that, I'll open up for questions.
Questions? Mr. Ashcraft?
Mr. Bartelak, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bartelak, recently you and I had some conversations about some performance changes and metrics that you were developing, and you shared with me that there was a change in the call answering system. Do you remember, do you know what I'm referring to, and that you had some success there? Could you take a moment and reflect on what you did and the impact of that?
Yes, in the, in the call center, we have five call center technicians, and we track the, the number of calls that come in, not only in total, but also by the individual technicians, and we found that if it was a question pertaining to something in our own department, the technicians all wear headsets, so they could move around the office and go to someone and find out that information if they didn't see it on their, on their computer. Well, in doing so, they were disconnecting themselves from the, the phone system itself, so we realized they didn't need to disconnect. It's a, it's a wireless set, they could just keep things going, so that, that, where we found that where some song, some phone calls were being dropped or missed, it completely eliminated that because now they're able to, it was just looking at the procedures and finding a solution.
So you actually increased your, your answer rate and decreased your abandoned rate, I guess at the same time, but, by just analyzing, very good. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Okay, next, we have elections.
And with me is, okay, Election Commissioner Ronnie Metzger, and the, with the Election Office, Nathan Carter. I'll let Ronnie begin to go through the election's mission or what's successful.
Thank you, it's our privilege to be here and run and present.
Yeah.
Thank you, it's our privilege to be here to present to you today, and-
You're on now.
Robust. Okay, I'm hearing challenged. If it's too light, too loud, tell me.
All right, you're good, you're good.
I'm good, okay, all right. The mission of the Election Office is to serve the public by administering the election process and promoting voter participation as required by Kansas statute. And I would like to echo what John Bartelak just said, our team is awesome. The day I arrived, I recognized and realized it's a stellar team, I still feel that way today, and I appreciate all of their hard work. It's sacrificial, and they, they do this because of the joy of their heart of serving the public for the greater good, to do the right thing in the right way at the right time. I also would like to just say that we cannot do what we do without the collaboration with other departments within the county, and I have found great joy in partnering with departments such as the CMO's office, DTI, Budget Legal, TFM, HR, facilities, and the list goes on, for fear of leaving someone out. I just say, the whole process of working in a collegial way with other departments has been amazing, and we are, we are unable to do what we do without that level of support. And then last, I'd just like to say thank you for the continued support from the Board of County Commissioners in all that we do and say, because without you, we, we would not be able to function. We have been rewriting our performance measures, and it's not complete, but I appreciate Gail and the work that she did in helping us this last year so much to guide us in a number of issues, as we're continuing to try and work forward in our office on all things related to budget and all other issues related to professional management of how we function in our office. And so one of the issues we tackled was the, the language in our performance measures, and I won't take time today to, to detail those changes, but I'm pleased that it's going to help guide us and focus us to greater things in the future as we move forward. Three key points, municipal elections coming up in 19 with our new voting equipment that we'll have deployed by then, of course, and, so we're looking forward to that. We did have an interesting time watching the trend, the early trending of the municipal elections. In order to really assess that, you need to think in terms of the election, municipal elections back in 2013, because you cannot compare 2017 to 2015. There were things that were different, and I won't go into the detail there, but to get a true comparison, apple to apple, you go 2017 compared to 2013, and thereby you can see what's happened. And I think it's interesting, we had double the outturn of the public for, for the voting in both the August primary and the November general compared to the primary and the general in the spring elections in 2013. So we need to continue to monitor that, to see what kind of results are going to, we're going to experience as we move forward. This definitely has a budgetary impact on our office, and Gail is working with us so that we can measure carefully and monitor what's going on there. But I think part of the increase in the turnout was the schedule change, and I think part of it was the contentiousness of some of the elections throughout the county and, and the issues that were at hand. And so, well, it'll be interesting to see how these things, if there's a trend line or if that was just an aberration. But the third thing I'd like to point out is the continued growth that we have in our office of community outreach. We, I, I think there is a tremendous opportunity as an election office to always do more in reaching out in the community, and we've tried to do this without adding any additional expense, but just simply capturing the resources and availability of people, personnel, and, equipment, and opportunities to seize the day and have greater visibility within the community in a number of ways. And I think our success is indicated by the Community Satisfaction Survey. The Election Office, if you, if you look and dig into the weeds there, you'll find that we had very, very high ratings, and the customer satisfaction is very high with, generally speaking, things about issues that the Election Office drives, such as elections and registration process with the public. So we're pleased with that, but we're not satisfied with that, and we've set in our performance measures, so very, very small growth to, to try and improve on the already positive feeling that is out there about the Election Office in our community. The advanced vote is continued, continues to demonstrate high favorability with, with the public, and we need to continue to monitor that, that we need, if we are committed to that, we need to be able to continue to resource that in marketing, promotion, and keeping it consistent. Now, in 2017, we had six locations for the first time. We had never had but just one location and offered it for one week. And in keeping with financial measures, we went with just one week, but we did have six locations to maintain the continuity for the voters of that advanced voting location. And, and they seem to be pleased with that. So our, another outreach opportunity we have is the partnership with the public schools running elections. We're not gearing this up in a very assertive way, meaning we're not going out and drumming up business, we're simply responding to those requests that we get. And when I arrived at the office, there were, there were no elections of students with the taxpayer-based voting machine systems going out to the schools. It had been something that was there at some point in the distant past, but we reignited that and did two pilot programs in that very first fall, uh, spring, and then this last year, we grew that to six. And so it's growing by word of mouth, and we're tweaking and learning, and eventually the goal would be to have one student-led, student-based, county taxpayer-based voting machine election in a given high school one time per year. That would be about 30 high schools that would have that happen. And with that, we're recruiting students to register to vote, to become a poll worker, and giving the curriculum back to the, to the teachers to tie together, again, one last outreach to the students about the responsibility of voting when they go out to become an adult after high school. So we're excited about that. We have another, let's see, it's over 100 students have been serving as poll workers, by the way, which is higher than any county across the state, and they are trained to do any position, with the exception of assistant or supervising judge, and they are paid in the same way with, with a stipend that any of the other adults serve. So it's, it's a great outreach opportunity. Then we have a speaking circuit, and we go to fairs and festivals and other events. We give tours of the office, and so we have a lot of public outreach going on. One of the biggest bang for our buck is our earned media, and I think we do a pretty good job of, when, when there's an opportunity to reach out and become visible to the public. Yesterday, we were on three out of the four news stations in town, and if you count the weekend, we were on all four, of all four stations. And that comes at no cost, but at great value, to be able to market ourselves and become present in the community. And of course, this was all around this choice of the vendor and the style, and the kind of machine that we're going to be, and we have several sequences like that that we plan to execute over the summer with earned media. The key to our success for deployment of the new voting machines, of course, is the, the visibility and getting the message out to the people and having various strategies to take that to, to the public. And with that, I'll turn it back to Gail.
And going through the budget, the budget for 2019 is 3.6 million, and as you can tell and might imagine, it will vary depending on the type of election year it is. The FTEs have remained constant at 17. And then some of the trends and measures, we did for the first time do the registered voters per filled FTE. In 2019, it's 23,500. I don't know that, we know what this is going to tell us yet, but, you know, we, we figure we'll get and see if it can, you know, measure maybe when we need more as we get more voters. The election workers is the next trends and measures, and again, as you can imagine, they will go consistently with the type of election, and you can tell, as Ronnie had mentioned, in 2017, the election workers were greater, but I believe that's because of the fall election, again, in comparison to the spring. So with that, I'll defer to the Commission for questions.
Questions? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Metzger, thank you, as always, you do an enthusiastic and well-versed presentation. You're doing well. I, I hear good things about you all the time, so keep it up. And I wanted to comment, I appreciate the description or the mission statement about promoting voter participation in your comments. I think you're on the right track, because you, you've got one measure there about eligible voters being registered, and that's a good measure, but actually getting people to the polls and tracking that, I don't know what your role is, but if you're not enthusiastic about it, then it's not going to be nearly as successful, so I, I hope you continue that. I was wondering, though, have you thought about trying to capture, because, because this has been an issue that comes up every time that we convene as the Canton Board of Canvassers, and it's in regard to the number of ballots that- number of ballots that, and if I use the wrong term, please correct me, but the number of ballots that we have to disqualify because of some legally prescribed or some technical difficulty. And that, to me, we've talked about it a little bit in terms of efforts to drive down those errors and drive up the number of qualified voters. Are you tracking with me and using that as an indicator, because that keeps reoccurring, and I'm not saying it's bad, but it just, whenever you have to, or at least for me, disqualify somebody, it just rubs a little bit. Does that make sense?
Certainly. And Commissioner, I appreciate your value of hoping that every voter's vote can count, and that's, I can guarantee you, every one of our team members feel exactly that way, that we want those votes to count, every vote possible to count. However, we have to go by the statutes, and what the statute says is what we do. And so, outside of going out and, you know, I'm not sure what else we can do besides what we've done.
But I don't know if there's an education component or so forth, but I would hope that that's part of your effort to kind of assess your performance because of promoting voter participation. And to me, that's qualified, valid, considered participation, not just, well, they did it even though we're going to throw it out. So I'm not trying to trivialize it, but that's an important component.
And we do have a number, the 2016 elections featured 11,000 provisional ballots, and when it was all said and done, 8,008 of those were counted. So an enormous percentage of those that are in question wind up getting counted. So that's always encouraging to just kind of look back over your shoulder and see the statistic and say, oh, well, that was pretty significant. And most of the ones that did not count, I think about 2,700 of those, were people who actually had not registered to vote.
Fair point. I think that's a good performance indicator, or a valid one. I don't know how good it is, but I just mentioned that.
Right.
The other thing I wanted to ask, and Commissioner Allen has raised this issue before, and Mr. Allen, if you were going to raise it again, I apologize, but I've been struck by the success you've had with the supercenters, the supersites. That's my term. I don't know what you call them, but the.
Advanced voting sites.
The large, yeah, and the turnout that you've gotten and the success of that. But extending that to actual election day to cut down on the number of mini-sites, because to me, it just intuitively seems more expensive to have more people at smaller sites versus the larger sites. And I know there are logistical issues there, but I hope that is something that you're considering, and I know you've got a lot on your plate, but that, to me, seems like an important opportunity if you can find the balance. I mean, I'm not saying get rid of all of them, but how best to make that work.
Okay, I'd be happy to address that. One of the premises that we operate under is we don't make too many changes too quickly so as to erode the confidence of the voter in the process and the system. And so we have an enormous amount of things that we've been thinking about and planning and processing, how might this work? I'd like to distinguish two things for you in your remarks. One is advanced vote. So that is truly, the advanced vote process is any voter can go to any site on any of those 12 days and vote. They don't have to go to a site specific.
Right.
Okay?
And that's great.
So that's good. We cannot do that on election day. So.
Why?
Because of the management of the crowd. We would not be able, that's the whole point of having a designated site for the, okay, it's a logistical control issue. So one of the things that we're looking at is beginning the process, and of course, I give you this explanation, keeping in mind that we cannot do too much too rapidly, or it will upset the continuity for the voter, and that will become problematic. But one of the things we're considering is looking at some of our existing advanced vote locations and making them a super vote location on election day. Now, I did not say super voting. I call it kind of a expanded number of precincts who are designated to that as their election day polling site. And when we make that move, say, for example, Arts and Heritage Center has 50 voting machines during advanced voting. What happens if we just loaded so many, designated so many precincts, you know, say 20 or 30 precincts into that location for election day? It would be capable mathematically of handling that number of voters on that day. It's not a vote center. That's different. But it would be an expanded and enlarged volume of voters that would be expected to vote there. So that's our first step, and we'll be contemplating how that might look, and then watching and monitoring what the results of the voters, what their reactions were to that, and how the traffic flow is managed and so forth. If that works well at a couple or three locations, then we can expand that concept to other sites that have a large enough footprint, parking, space for the machines, and all of those things, and the ability to know that it's going to consistently be there. One of our goals is then, with that strategy, is to eliminate some of these very difficult ADA noncompliant locations in the aging northeast part of the county where we have great difficulty with remediation. And so this is one of our strategies to do that. And the bottom line, as you attested to, is if we can, we can eventually wind up saving a significant amount of the stipend money that we pay to the election workers, because every site has at least nine workers. Every time we're able to combine a couple, then we can eliminate about nine workers. And so we wind up getting some cost savings there. But all of this comes kind of with a need to be gradual and methodical about implementation of the change.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's it for the schedule for today. I would remind the board that Thursday, we have another session planned, currently scheduled from 1:00 to 5:00. And so you can see before you that the focus is both infrastructure and culture and rec. And so with that, unless there's any more questions.
Any other questions? Mr. Rajkra.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll ask the question, and maybe Mr. Waters can give me a response offline. I was noticing under the DTI that there's almost $500,000 in new personnel, and I was wondering, were the performance metrics, you know, how we're measuring success with that half million dollars, and give me some information. If it's in the packet, I just couldn't capture that, so I was hoping you could help me out there. And secondly, on the county manager's office, the one ADA web coordinator for $100,000, I'd be interested in the kind of, how we're going to measure success there, because one of the things that I have heard repeatedly is that while residents are happy with our communication strategy, we are improving, and I commend you and the former, or the soon-to-be former director of communications efforts, but one of the criticisms I hear is that some people believe, seem to see that Johnson County and the CMO's offices is very heavy into the PR staffing, and to be able to justify the argument, to respond to the argument that, well, why are you adding another one when you have, I don't know how many FTEs we have now, but, and part of that is due to some reorganizing we've done, but I would like to get a better handle on that.
Okay. Well, for several years, the issue was, why don't we have a bigger effort? And so I'm glad to hear that we're making progress in that regard, because the effort is being recognized. And so, anything else? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.